Six o'clock, we'll call our meeting to order and start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Next, ready to roll, Paul?
Simonson, Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman, Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Okay, next we'll have approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Colister, seconded by Lyon, and if we have no discussion, go ahead and take the role.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Coolman. Oh, Holm.
Yes.
How about Alinger?
Yes.
All right, hang on, okay. Seems like it.
Do we need to do it again?
No, I got it.
Okay. Next, we have public participation, is there anybody in the audience who want to address the council? Anyone in Zoom land? Okay, if not, we'll move on to our regular presentations, and item A is the 2023 First Quarter Building Inspector's Report.
How are we doing today?
Doing good.
Guys, you got any questions?
Just what I like, a very fast presentation.
Okay, well, I mean, first quarter obviously is kind of the startup of the year, a lot of building permits are starting to come in. Not quickly, but they're starting. Of course, property maintenance is on fire right now. It's usually that way in the spring. So I'm trying to hit everything I can, from little stuff to big stuff. I've got some zoning things on this agenda that we've been working on with planning and zoning. So I've been dealing with planning and zoning, zoning board adjustments, fielding a lot of calls of people that are either interested in building something here or some of the existing buildings that we have, the bigger commercial buildings, and doing upgrades and things like that, so they have a lot of questions on permits and different things, so kind of doing all that. I don't know, that's about all I've been doing.
Any plans for special projects for the summer?
Well, just hitting everything I can, I guess, for, I mean, that's nothing, you know, planned for like buildings and stuff right now, or? Yeah, I mean, just we'll keep working on property maintenance and.
Overall, how's that going?
I think we're denting it, I, you know, you're never gonna get away from it. I mean, I think every city in the, in the country has issues with property maintenance, but, you know, if we can get it down to where we're dealing with smaller things, that's what we want. You know, I got a couple of big properties that I'm gonna be dealing with this year that we haven't dealt with for years, so hopefully we can make a dent there, so. But that's our plans.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thanks Brad, thank you.
Thanks Brad.
We move on to item seven, that's our consent agenda, consisting of the minutes from the April 17, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Our bills payable through May 2, 2023 in the amount of $75,309. I think that's the lowest we've ever had. Renewal special class E retail alcohol license filed by Hy-Vee Dollar Fresh. A new Class C retail alcohol license filed by Macocota Speedway LLC. And the appointment of Robert Fitzgerald to the zoning board of adjustment. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Holm.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. If we have no discussion, take the role.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item eight is a public hearing, it's a public hearing regarding the sale of airport property of 3.59 acres. Do we have anybody who wish to address the council on this? Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close the hearing by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. If we have no discussion, take the role.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Item nine is old business, with item A being a resolution authorizing the sale of property by bid process and authorizing invitation, invitation, invitation to bid the airport property of 3.59 acres. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Colister.
Seconded.
With Lyon.
Seconded by Lyon.
Lyon and Rick Earl.
Lyon and, motion by Lyon, seconded by Rick Earl. If we have no discussion, take the role.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, item 10 is new business, with A being a resolution declaring items as surplus equipment and authorizing those items for sale.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, thank you for being here this Tuesday night. This is the first of this type of resolution that I'm familiar with, with the City of Macocota. I'm told that this is a pretty large list for how this typically goes, so we're setting out a sealed bid process with these items due in June 12th, we'll advertise these items for sale. Hopefully, we do get competitive offers, and then, once that June 12th date comes to us, we'll address any unsold items at that time.
Adding on to Josh's, the water, water wastewater items, except for the pump, the sampler and the water meter, are, are specific items to specific people. Those we're gonna advertise in some like trade magazines, so we can get the full, full amount of, you know, va- value, correct?
Is there any expected recompense, recompense that you expect from these, or do you have a minimum bid, or?
We don't have a minimum bid right now. So when we do get a sealed offer, you're not compelled to sell it at a price, I mean, we'll come back to you for authorization for the sale. But me as the manager would rely on department heads to say, hey, these are what these are going for based on value. As opposed to the airport resolution here, we know that that's appraised at 57, and we've set that standard in our background material. These items are a bit different.
Because I was interested in the bouncy horse. Just, just saying. Bouncy horse.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. If we have no discussion, take the role.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item B is a resolution setting May 15th at 6:00 PM as a public hearing date for the budget reestimate for 2022. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a routine annual item for us, this is a public hearing notice to come into our closest estimate as possible as we finish out this current financial year. And so, the large budget document that I've been working on will be published online as soon as we close out that public hearing in the next meeting.
Okay. Rule of motion, for discussion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Holm. If there's no discussion, take the role.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item C is an ordinance amending Title V additional height and area regulations, Section 1L, Section 4 accessory buildings, area and location subsection 1, 4 and 6 of the Macocota Corle- ordinances, first reading. Do you want to address that? Yeah. Go ahead, you're here. Now, the height didn't.
Yes.
Square foot is?
So basically, right now, our accessory building height, maximum height is 15 feet for an accessory building. And Scott and I have talked in the past, and Scott Worth, and with some of the modern types of buildings and the different pitches that go well with the neighborhood and the house, even small buildings sometimes go over that 15 feet height, and they have to get a, well, they don't have, they apply for variance, they may get a variance, they may not. And I guess my, my goal here is to start, you know, trying to get less variances, because variances aren't really supposed to be given out as easily as we have in the past. So this would help, because this is the, you know, one of the ver- many applications we get are for heights of the accessory building. And so, Scott Worth and I both kind of fell on the, the heights of 17 feet, would probably catch and it won't overdue, or make it look like a huge building in the back of your house or, or your neighborhood, so. And then, well, that, that's all I need to say on that one.
Okay.
There's a, Brad, there's two other items here, there's 30% consideration, there's 1,200 square feet.
Okay, I didn't know if that was included in this.
Yes, it's all one motion.
So. Excuse me a minute, Brad.
Yes, yes.
We're just talking about new build here?
This would be new build.
Yeah, okay, and I mean, there's everything under the sun in my neighborhood from two to two and a half story garages and.
Yeah, but some of them were built in.
Oh, I know some of them are a hundred and some years old, like, like my house.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this would be from this time forward. So, the 30% stuff, basically, so, in our ordinance, it defines an accessory building as a swimming pool, a tool shed, a building, a, um, rock, like, built up area for like a grill, you know, kind of thing, is all considered an accessory building in our ordinance. If you look around town, we have allowed many things to be built in our backyards. Maybe we have, maybe we haven't, swimming pools, sheds together. They, our ordinance only allows one accessory building and one garage. So if you have an attached garage, you can only have one building in your backyard. So if you look around, there, there's a tool shed, the pool, that's, that's outside of our ordinance already, if you have a garage. So I'm trying to get this lined up with what we've been doing. Kind of best practices too, kind of, not, not limiting, limiting the, the amount, the number of accessory buildings, but let's limit the space they can take up in your backyard. So if you take the, the rear yard area and put a shop, a pool and a deck, as long as it doesn't take up more than 30% of your property, in your, the rear yard property, then that would be allowed as a permitted, permitted thing without like variances and things like that.
So, things like attached decks to the back of the house are?
That actually would be considered a part of the house.
Part, okay.
Yeah, so that's still, if it's attached to the house, you still have to have that 30-foot setback for your rear yard, and it's part of the, it's part of the main structure. So your accessory buildings have to be 10 feet from your main structure. They can be within two feet of a property line, and right now, you can only have one in your rear yard, if you have a garage. I'm trying to change that so that we can, you can have actually more than one accessory structure in your rear yard. But limit the size, limit the area that it would take up. And it's not just me, the planning and zoning kind of recommends this, I'm sorry, I keep putting me in there, but.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the points I was gonna clean up, Brad didn't dream this up in his office, this, this went to planning and zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, this largely came out of an ordinance training too, and, and, you know, Brad's seen a lot of things at this point, and you haven't seen a proposal like this from him yet, at least since I've been here, where he's really trying to address a lot of the precedent issues that have occurred here over decades, and, and, and we feel, Brad, planning and zoning, feels this 30% and the 17-foot will, will help us, help bring people in line.
Okay.
So the 30% is aggregate, all buildings or outbuildings?
Together.
Can, together, be no more than 30% of the remaining ground of your backyard?
So if you have a, if you have a big lot?
Yeah.
You could have three or four accessory buildings. If you have a small lot, you may only have one.
All right, is this 30% of all of the land on your lot, or just the backyard?
Rear yard.
So if you have a big side yard, could you actually put another outbuilding on that too?
There's some zoning reservation to that.
What's that?
There's already some to that, it can't like send past the front of the house.
You can't go past front of the house, so if it is truly a side yard thing, and you have enough room to be 10 foot away from your house?
Yeah.
And 30 foot back? Then that's a possibility, this doesn't address that.
Okay.
This just addresses the rear yard.
I'm not planning anything, I just.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to think, no, you don't have that.
Well, do we have any other questions? Anything else to add?
I think I got it all.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, we got a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Holm.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
We have no discussion, take the role then.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item D is a resolution recognizing the need for the City of Macocota Traffic Safety Action Plan and publicly committing the city to the successful pursuit of zero roadway fatalities and a significant decline in serious injury accidents with a target completion date of June 30th, 2027. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, so with the street improvement plan, it fall, it falls just short of being a traffic safety action plan in the eyes of some people I've consulted with, and the reason they have started to think about the next two resolutions is because the bipartisan infrastructure law, the BIL, bill that was passed by Congress last year is starting to get down to the level of, okay, what now can we do as a local organization to put together our street improvement plan with opportunities for funding in the future? So, what we're looking at is potentially an 80% funded source in the future to help fund a lot of our street projects, mill and fills that we'll talk about later, to begin to be thinking about passenger safety, vehicle, bikes, kids to school, joggers and all these projects. However, when you look at our street plan, it doesn't necessarily start diving down the path of, okay, this intersection and crash data gets into volume of traffic on roadways. There's a further analysis here that we're not quite there with in our street plan. So, talked to WHKS, talked to some others, and we feel that this can be a city-led project. We're capable of doing it, won't cost you any extra money. The next two resolution titles have certain trigger words in them that are related to the exact test of what's considered a traffic action plan. But the objective is to make sure that we have a valid plan in place, so that priority one, we're identifying at-risk intersections where accidents are occurring. I realize there's not many, hopefully never any roadway fatalities in town or elsewhere. But these are some of the things that we'd like to see happen, a plan to reduce accidents, a plan to reduce major ones. So some of the volume that we see is already at known intersections, Pleasant and Main, Summit and Main. There's things that we know locally, we have that benefit as a small city, but we need to put this analysis together and get it compiled so that we can start taking the next steps towards these processes that are coming down from the feds. And so, when you start looking at what's required to get us into that implementation phase of those grants that we compare together with our street plan in the future, these are the added steps. And I'm happy to lead our teams in the right direction on this, and we will. And so, we plan to do a lot of feedback loops, including some surveys, and I'm looking forward to putting my mind to this and, and making sure that we see through it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Discussion? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Rick Earl, seconded by Alinger. If there's no discussion, take the role.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now, item E is a resolution enlisting the Public Safety Committee and two residential, resident volunteers, Paul Haley and Katie Pauls, to form the City of Macocota Traffic Safety Action Plan Task Force. Will oversee a comprehensive study of high-risk traffic accident locations, monitor plan development, draft a formal tra- traffic safety action plan recommendation to the City Council of the City of Macocota, and implement the plan and monitor the results on behalf of the City of Macocota.
I have nothing further to say beyond what I described.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Rick Earl. If there's no discussion, take the role.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Okay, item F is a discussion of possible motion approving payment in the amount of $18,514 to Ailers Cooney for the SRF wastewater treatment plan.
Thank you, Mayor, this one's outside of the bills list for a particular reason. We had to come up with that up to $4 million bond for the 2023A sewer plant issue. All those public hearings and all those motions and all those actions leading up to the debt itself, we finally got our bill from Ailers and Cooney. We felt it was appropriate to pull this out of the bills list for your consideration. This is the cost of doing business and taking out debt for us.
Do we have any questions? Motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Lyon.
Second.
Seconded by Holm.
Yeah.
And if there's no discussion, take the role.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Good, motion passes. Item G is a resolution awarding a construction bid to Macocota Municipal Electric Utility in the amount of $52,317.87 for the South Main lighting project and approving a 28E agreement between the City of Macocota and Jackson County for the purchase of street and trail lighting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm much more pleased to present this to you than our prior offers, which if you remember, were about 130 and 140,000 respectively. And that's for many reasons I won't get into, but this is something that I understand was initially desired on the project, and then as, as the project was completed, it looked nice, it was being used more, it felt like we needed lighting from that Bullock's area to the deeper corridors of South Main Street where you turn to go into Walmart by Citizens Bank, Carlisle. So, the county has a lot of jurisdiction there, we have quite a bit of jurisdiction as well. We were initially talking about 11 lights as indicated on this map at about 200 feet. We suddenly were being told and recommended, hey, go to 12 so you get full coverage and you're not missing anything as you're driving down. 175 feet or 200 feet for that matter is quite a bit closer than our typical standard and subdivision. So the community, if they're traveling South Main Street, will see a noticeable difference on their night driving, having that roadway lit. So just so you're aware, that, that's what's being presented here as well. Obviously, the cost is a good advantage to us compared to the prior offers, and the fund balance itself sits at a pretty strong positive fund balance, because we never used all that money at this point, and we don't expect to. So we feel pretty comfortable with this. The county signed the agreement this morning, that's in your background, and they will be reimbursing us after July 1st. So, all the pieces are in place, we're just asking for your support in this vote here.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Lyon, seconded by Rick Earl. If there's no discussion, take the role.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lyon.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item H is a resolution awarding a construction bid to River City Paving in the amount of $427,000, $427,914.42 for the 2023-24 Mill and Fill project.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll introduce this a little bit and turn it over to Frank, because this one's kind of complex in, in many ways, and it's exciting, I'm really pleased to be presenting this, and I hope you're, you're happy to be considering it too, because these are not, these are not Band-Aids, this is really grinding away some depth, replacing pavement which is desperately needed throughout town here. And so, this is priority groups 1 and 2, with the exception of South Second Street in our street improvement plan. And, long story short, is the bid ended up being a lot better with River City Paving, and that's because they have a temporary asphalt plant just outside of town. They're doing some pretty large local projects where they're not incurring as many transportation and mobilization costs for their equipment. I think the greatest question at this juncture is when we talked as a public works committee about what to bid, which is what's in front of you in this larger chart. The S curve from, in Maple, that would be about where Verla Beck's place is, and where the, the Clinton Engines property ends if you're moving east. All the way out to Jacobson is a substantial amount, and it was not in priority groups 1 and 2, but we know that it is quite bad. And so, I'm, I'm recommending a couple of things here, I, I, we can do a budget amendment in the future if you wish to do the whole thing. But what I have described here is, there's another funding source through the RPA, which is ECIA, and I would never expect you to know those things, but they, they fund a city our size by about 150 or 200,000 dollars a year. We have borrowed quite a bit of money from them for the Platt Street project, and that was in the past. And so, they allocate funds four years in advance, believe it or not, so if you're thinking very strongly about Maple, and you wish to program future funds for the improvement of Maple, or others for that matter, you could sit here and look at Maple and Quarry, because there's certain RPA eligible routes in town. Things like Summit Street, Maple, Quarry, Main, Platt Street, obviously. So, that does take time, and it does have to gather some more requirements, and you're in control of that bidding process, but it can't be done by just saying, hey, let's go back to bid in the next four weeks with this RPA money and see what happens. It's something that we have to return to in the fall and would likely happen next year. So, as we have a broader discussion about how to fix Maple, that's one of your strong options here. Quarry is also on that list and high up in the priority groups that are LP, RPA eligible and, and fit. But, kind of at this moment, I, I think you kind of get the sense of where our budget stands for next year. This is quite a bit of work still, but if you wish to go all the way, we can deal with that, we can do a budget amendment, but it just impacts a more aggressive schedule than we had initially laid out.
And if we do use that money, we'll have to get it engineered, so obviously, the price will go up. I mean, I mean, the engineering will go up the, so.
For the RPA money you're just talking about?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, we're talking about Maple, there's two different Maples, were we just talking about the east end?
Yes, so.
From Clark on, basically, but it'd be past Clark by about half a block.
Yeah, so West Maple, in between South Second and Fifth Street, is what's still in my recommendation.
Right.
East Maple from approximately the easternmost point of Clinton Engines property to Jacobson is what I'm saying here.
Yeah.
You might want to take a step back, but we've heard a lot as staff in the public works committee about how terrible that road is.
That's a heavily traveled road by big, heavy trucks and.
Yeah.
Equipment, and that's why it's such in bad shape, so it would have to be rebuilt to withstand that kind of traffic. I wonder if that would add to the price, also.
We, another, another item is that if we do use this RPA money, as Josh says, we've already kind of borrowed in advance. I mean, now we're gonna be, we won't have any access to any RPA money for the next four or five years for any other street projects either. So there's good and bad. I don't know what else to. I don't know what else to.
That's partially correct. What I'm, so the money that would be available to you next year for Maple Street, for an example, is fiscal year '27 money, and I know that sounds crazy. But you can program that money for use now. So the next year, fiscal year '28, you can still use it, but you'll, I mean, I guess when Chandra at ECIA is managing his funds, you'd always have a negative balance. And so with Platt Street, you took on a heck of a negative balance and you're building back towards having a positive balance. But that money's available to you in those increments for future years, which sounds, doesn't sound correct, but it is. So the money that you could program next year is pretty far out in advance. Frank's just talking about to get you back to a positive balance. If you did absolutely nothing for several years, it would return you to a positive balance, so.
Sounds like government.
Yep.
And if we would go with the, with the option of not doing the Maple between the S curve, we would be within our CIP budget for our like 10-year plan. You know, we're going to spend $335,000 this coming year. I don't have the numbers in front of me for next year. We would be sort of staying within our budget that we, the Public Works Committee and Josh and I came up with.
Will we be doing the final phase of the alley reconstructions this year as well?
The alleys are being done this year under this year's money. And that's going, that's all for bids, that's all for bids as we speak, Mark.
Cool. So yeah, I move that we go with option one.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion by Lion. Seconded by Alinger. To go with option one?
Judy, stand by for a second. In terms of processing this on resolution paper, do you want to amend the title of this resolution to match the dollar amount? How would you picture that going?
So I would just say that we're going to award a bid to River City Paving in the amount of, is that this 316?
That's correct, yep.
168, 82.
It's at the bottom of page seven.
So you're.
Yeah, that's what I said, Judy.
Okay. That's what I thought.
English can be confusing. Okay.
That's what I agree.
Yes.
Okay, we're good to go then. Take the roll.
Thank you, Council.
Yep.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lion.
Yes.
Colister.
No.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Did it pass or not? It passed?
Nope.
Okay. Item I is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and purchasing streetlight replacements through Macochona Municipal Electric Utility.
Thank you, Mayor. So this one's mostly based out of a safety concern and also some severe frustration with some supply chain issues and manufacturer issues with getting us the parts we need to replace these things. And at least one council member knows what we've been dealing with here for claiming our money, which we have received on two of four of those and we have a claim in with Werner Enterprises for a third. But a fourth is currently still MIA and under investigation still in many ways. So in order to replace these things in a timely manner, we went to our auditors after some frustration on the basis of having some concern for night driving safety. So what we're presenting to you is kind of, I don't want to say an infinite, but you can revoke it at any point. But we'd like a resolution in place to waive competitive bidding because we feel it would slow us down to replace those streetlights. And there is a backlog of time to get streetlights in, but this would help us speed up the process to get them replaced. And I think the key point here is, one, our staff is going to make sure that the price is competitive at all times. When MMAU says it's going to be a certain price, well, tell us why that's a good price. And two, it allows us to work with someone that's focused on us and not jumping from jobs all throughout Eastern Iowa and get streetlights back up. So for many reasons, I think this makes sense. There's no profit motive here and we feel that we need to respond and get these moving back up on the streets. And the last point I was just going to say is there's some language in the resolution that makes it crystal clear that it has to be the same. And if it can't be the same, it has to be substantially similar to what's been, what's around the light that's being replaced.
Okay. I can't remember if we made a motion of this or not.
No, we got that.
You're not.
Okay, do we need to do a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion by Lion.
A second.
Seconded by Holm. If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Lion.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item J is ordinance amending Title III Community Protection, Chapter 21, Section 5, Administrative Property Enforcement of the City of the Macochona Code of Ordinances, and this is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. Provide some background on this as well because we did just recently pass this on a third reading. So Chief Zymet and I and Brad basically have the citation format completely finished at this point, besides a pay online option. And so as we begin to think about the organizational process to manage these from file to file, ideally, the way the ordinance is currently written is that if these $60 fines aren't resolved or some action isn't taken, there's a 30-day trigger where they increase to 90. And without having to dive into some serious enterprise software questions about what computer management system can track that, we're putting our organization at risk of, well, I paid on the 29th today when it was actually the 31st, and how do you begin to do it? And how do you make it right? Which dispatch and chief are, they can do. But I think having this flat will keep us in a better position to have the files managed correctly and won't pose that risk in the future. And that's the preferred option inside the Police Department. I consulted with Councilman Simonson about putting this back on the agenda for this purpose. He felt that simple is good. He felt that this is more advantageous anyway to the citizen. These are meant to be just small fines when things are deserved. They're not meant to escalate and trigger into $90 fines. And our leverage, if things are not going our way, is still that if something is unresolved or someone's accumulated two or three of these, Brad or Chief can turn these into municipal infractions still, which carries a much heavier fine amount when it comes time, if so. So in speaking with Councilman Simonson and thinking about how our organizational process should work to make this successful, we feel that this is the most simple option before we make that order for a ton of these citation forms together. So I will add as well, in addition to this penalty and payment code language that we're discussing, just to keep at 60, we have been discussing internally about adding littering. And we have that in ordinance already. And Chief, I don't know if you can speak for a few minutes on littering and why you feel that would be advantageous for the PD?
Mayor, Councilman? One of the reasons we think that this might be a good benefit to add is we've all driven around town, we've seen people put stuff out on the curb. And it kind of falls in that gray area of, you know, we know they want it to be picked up or somebody does scrap it, but it doesn't always go away. This is a way that would clearly define that's littering. It's clearly defined in our ordinance already and it would be a, it's not an ambiguous charge for me to look and say, that's rubbish or that's trash in your yard. It gives us a little bit of quick action to get that property off of that curb. We go up to a house, hey, you need to get that in or you're going to be charged. And if it gets removed, problem solved. If it doesn't, we have a fine that we can immediately levy on to that homeowner or property owner for littering and move forward that way.
Does that, like if somebody sets an old chair out on the curb, wants somebody to take it, does that mean they can't do that anymore? Or we're still going to allow that?
Well, that would in itself be by definition littering. I think it comes down to a little bit of common sense when we use this too. And when something's been sitting out there and we have a pile of snow or that chair's been rained on for two or three days, it's probably pretty clear nobody's going to come and claim that. It would even go as far as, in our current code, it identifies yard waste or rubbish. So those people that are putting piles of sticks out into the right of way and into the curb, thinking the city should come by and pick them up, when that's not a service we offer unless an emergency has been declared, that itself could be addressed that way too. And it gives us a little bit of authority to have that addressed a little quicker.
It's a good question, a good answer. So this, the ordinance is pretty simple and it lists out just a few of these grass, snowmobile, for example. But all this would do is just say littering 3-1-12. So in addition to the red, you know, as of today, and kind of speaking with what we're doing here before we make this order, what you would also be supporting in a motion would be, hopefully, littering 3-1-12 in addition to this flat 60.
That doesn't have to be on the agenda?
It's not in the title here, no.
I'm saying, but in order to add that, doesn't it have to be on the agenda or does it not?
Well, my.
It seems weird that we could just add something that hasn't been published.
My opinion of this is that the title of this ordinance doesn't refer back to changing the 60 bucks. And if we described amending this in the first place and we talk openly, and this is a recorded session on YouTube, that you knowingly are entering into discussion about littering and we can venture down that path. If you want to table this, I can ask our attorney and then come back to it.
I don't know. It just seems odd that we would discuss. It's not on the agenda, it wasn't for public knowledge, no. I don't know. I definitely don't have any opposition to adding it.
What's your opinion, Judy?
Did the ordinance we adopted first list specifically what would be covered under these?
Yes. It refers back to our city code that's already present.
And littering's not listed on that.
Not currently.
Although we do have littering currently listed in our city code.
Yeah, but not on this.
Correct.
But the original ordinance lists every item that you have on that ticket, that section of that code. Do you remember?
The admin ordinance itself? Yeah. I mean, it refers specifically, like if it was grass, it would say grass, chapter this. It's very clear.
Then I would say maybe, just to be on the safe side.
Why don't we table it?
You table this and then we would just, it'd still be one ordinance. We'll just amend it to include that.
Okay.
Motion to two.
Motion by Colister to table this?
Second.
Seconded by Lion. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Colister.
Yes.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lion.
Yes.
Okay, that motion is at ordinance table. Item K is an ordinance amending Title III Community Protection, Chapter 20, Section 5, Administrative Traffic Enforcement of the Macochona Code of Ordinances, and this is the first reading.
Well, this is the same thing, and I have nothing further to add. And it's the same reasons for the 60 flat. I recommend at this point tabling this one as well so we can handle both at the same time.
Okay, we have a motion by Colister.
Second.
Seconded by Alinger. And if we have any discussion, then take the roll.
Alinger.
Yes.
Holm.
Yes.
Rick Earl.
Yes.
Lion.
Yes.
Colister.
Yes.
Okay, that's tabled. Item 11, Reports and Communications. Do we have anything from any of the council members? City manager?
I think there's just two big items I want to cover. First is Platt Street. We went through a final punch list last week. And Andy from Origin Design is just not ready yet to submit something by the end of the week. And Chig Fry is at a pause anyway, so there's no extreme rush in putting something in front of you. So we expect on May 15th to have that available for you for consideration for a final punch list on changes and these things. So I think there's probably some heavy decision-making ahead, but just wanted to keep you aware of some of the timelines involved as we come into that conversation again. And second, we had a, really just a fantastic presentation set with the brewery side room last night where the University of Iowa took some community project ideas, you know, saw through some wonderful presentations and one of which was the main green space. And it came into some pretty high attention and the visuals were just absolutely stunning and slash inspiring. There's a lot of information that's in flux and fluid at the moment. And some of those prices are more than expected. So we're going to continue to fundraise and we're going to continue to source items. And I have even posed a grant so far and included a potential item for final architectural service so that some value engineering can happen. But I think in terms of design and inspiration, we're about there as a group. So it was just really kind of a good experience and I want to thank you guys for coming in on Tuesday night, as opposed to last night, which was the only night a grant manager was available to attend in person. And he also was very impressed. So I don't know if that's going to make the difference between 200,000 in support or 300,000 in support, but it was nice to have that whole thing come together.
It was a very good presentation and those kids did do a lot of work and put a lot of thought into it. And I was very happy that they came and gave it to us.
Judy just poked me and she goes, hey, spring cleanup.